This is the one planning. Okay, it's six thirty-one and I've called the August twenty-sixth Planning Board meeting in two quarters. First on the agenda are the minutes.
And Secretary will review the minutes and incorporate the comments requested by the chairperson and I recommend approval of the minutes of August twelfth, two thousand fourteen.
Second on it?
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Stay. We move on to approval not required plans, and these are plans received between August thirteenth and August twenty-sixth. We have won the applicant is Mammoth Acquisition Company LLC to combine three lots into two lots located at ninety-three and one oh five Davis Straits and two thirty-eight Worcester Court, Falmouth. If there's someone here for the applicant, and I will remind the board that when this came before us, that was always their plan, to do that. So is there someone here who wishes to present this? We don't normally, if it's an A and R, but you may wish, yeah, okay, thank you. Please state your name.
For the record, Raoul Lizarri from Holmes McGrath with a civil engineers and last surveys for the applicant. And just a brief explanation, we're combining three existing lots and making it into two lots. If there's any particular questions that we have to answer.
Does anybody have any questions over?
This is not it. No. This is David Straits.
If not, then I need a motion.
Excuse me.
Yes.
This is the plan we're talking about right now, correct? David Straits?
Yeah, Mammoth Acquisition.
Oh, excuse me, right. Yes, I do.
And you'll see that this is the property line. Okay. So, may I have a motion?
Make a motion that we approve this A and R as requested.
Okay. Do I have a second?
Sure.
Okay. Yes, Ralph.
I wonder if your staff has any comments?
Yes, sir.
Okay. Any other questions?
Yeah, I have just one question. Would you indicate what the three lots are that we've combined to two? I see two here, but where are the original three lots?
There is the current CBS lot, that's the corner of Worcester Court and Route twenty-eight. Then the current residence side, which is a triangle piece. And then behind those two, going, stretching from Route twenty-eight all the way to Worcester Court, is the third one on the south side of the first two. It's a lot that contains four buildings, and it stretches the entire width from Route twenty-eight all the way to Worcester Court.
Okay. So it's been moved and seconded. If there are no further questions, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Abstained. Thank you. We move on. Public hearing. The applicant is Dario Enterprises LLC, Site Number One, Special Permit, to construct a fourteen thousand seven hundred eighteen square foot pharmacy building on two point eight four acres, located at four one nine East Falmouth Highway with associated parking, drainage, and landscaping. For the applicant, please.
Notice, Christian.
Pardon?
Notice.
Oh, sorry. Notices, Paul. Notices, please.
You didn't notice.
Thanks, Brian.
The notices, public hearing for this issue was raised on the closing dates of August eighth, two thousand fourteen, August fifteenth, two thousand fourteen, and August twenty-second, two thousand fourteen, in the Falmouth Enterprises. Notices were sent to the, by certified mail on August eleventh. Thirty-eight was signed receipts returned, and one was returned unclaimed.
Good evening. For your record, I'm Bob Hament, Falmouth Attorney, and I represent the applicant, Dario Enterprises LLC, which owns the parcel at the corner of Davisville Road and Route twenty-eight in East Falmouth, East Falmouth Highway. That is presently the site of a CBS store in a nineteen thousand two hundred square foot building that also includes some space in addition to the approximately eleven thousand square feet that the CBS occupies. And there's another building on the site that includes Tedeschi's and several other facilities, including a portion of the United States Post Office service that's rented, but the rest of those boxes are still. The proposal before you is to, to remove, to raise the existing nineteen thousand two hundred square foot building and replace it with a building with footprint of about thirteen thousand one hundred square feet, total floor area of a little over fourteen thousand square feet, a single use building just for CBS, better located on the site, better arranged in terms of parking and access and appearance. So, this is a proposal for new construction of over seven thousand square feet, and that requires a special permit from the Planning Board. But it is, as I've said, in substitution for a existing nineteen two thousand square foot building. And we think that all of the impacts, in fact, impacts for the, for the better. So it's a pleasure to present this application, and I'd like to just say that I think that the Dario Enterprises, the owner of the property, really deserves a lot of appreciation for what they're proposing to do, you know, trying to replace nineteen thousand square feet with nineteen thousand square feet. They just are trying to replace the CBS with a better, more attractive, better operating building. Now with me tonight is George Gamache, who is the project manager, and this Kevin Payton of EKA Architects, who's right here. Now, Kevin was the designer, as you probably remember, for the CBS building that will be constructed, the new CBS at the corner of Davis Straits and Jones Road, Worcester Court, in Falmouth. That is a project that, in terms of ownership and so on, is entirely separate, has nothing to do with the Dario project in East Falmouth, except perhaps for training. And so Mr. Payton had all the experience of dealing with the Planning Board and Design Review and so on in designing the building for East Falmouth. And I think that what he's done is certainly informed by what the town wanted at Davis Straits. Raoul Lizarri Rivera is here, the professional engineer of Holmes McGrath, the firm that did the planning. Dan Seline, Horiichi Seline, is the landscape architect for the project, and he shouldn't hear short. Now, not here, but involved in preparation for the hearing is Randy Hart of Vanessa and Russland, rather well-known traffic consultants, and we have submitted the traffic reports that, that he prepared. Perhaps not surprisingly, we're taking nineteen thousand and some square foot building, replacing it with a thirteen thousand square foot building, fourteen thousand some, fourteen thousand seven hundred eighteen actually, a square foot building that's replacing it. The traffic reports show that the traffic impacts will not increase adversely, in fact, they should be reduced based on the Institute of Traffic Engineers' calculations and accounts. There will be a reduction in, in traffic as a result of this project. Mr. Hart reports that there will be no level of service changes to the, as a result of The plan shows that we will be eliminating a curb cut on Davis Straits. This should look like this. This is the proposed new building.
This is Davis Straits.
I can show you the existing building.
Davis, Davis Straits.
Probably mostly you are familiar with it. This is the intersection of Route twenty-eight and Davisville Road, Cross Street, Old Weaving House Road. This is the existing nineteen thousand and some square foot building. This is the second building on the site. There are no changes proposed to this building at this time, maybe a future project, but we did, as the landscape plan shows, extend the new landscaping all the way to the property lines, and also there's new landscaping on the side of that building that's proposed. But no change over here. This building would be removed, and this building would replace it. And the location of the new building is changed to increase the setbacks from property lines, both from the street and from the south side, put a better organized parking arrangement with improved landscaping, eliminating the curb cut that is here closer to Davisville Road, eliminating that entirely, and having a single curb cut where there is already a curb cut at the southwest corner of the property. There is a drive-through proposed on the east side of the property, designed to be accessed from the route only entrance to the property with a traffic flow being like this. The service driveway, which is for trucks, dumpsters, and so on, will be signed for service vehicles only, which is not a way to get to this side of the property. And so, the only traffic flows into the parking area and out and into this area. At this time, I'm going to ask the architect, Kevin Payton, to describe the building that he's designed, and then ask Raoul to speak about drainage, runoff, and so on.
My name's Kevin Patton, I'm a senior associate at EKA Architects. And what we have in front of you today is very similar to the, the old project by Mammoth Acquisition. The architectural detailing is all in line with it. We just made some adjustments to accommodate this proposal's building footprint. The other store was just a hair over fifteen thousand feet, I believe, if I recall correctly. This one is just a little over thirteen thousand square feet. In order to compensate for the loss of storage, a mezzanine used for, exclusively for storage has been built into this design. The trim is all the same, white painted trim, the building cladding of white cedar shingles stained Cape Cod gray, the roofs, architectural asphalt shingles, same pitch, same heights, signage with a gooseneck lighting, all the same. The difference is primarily a shortening on Davisville Road because the building is the same width as the other store, just a little bit shorter, and an adjustment in the roof line here in order to accommodate the headroom required for the storage area. So that affects the south elevation here, and then just the back. And these face the back of the lot, there's really very little visibility in that area. But we did maintain all of the fancy screening around the compactor, the dumpster, the fencing, all of those, all in the starting play here. One other change I want to alert you to that's different from the other store is I carried the covered walkway all the way to the end of the building. We have a, the other plaza over here, so I did turn the corner and, and blend it into the return geometry, kind of upside down over here. So it blends into this covered walkway facing the adjacent plaza. We went through a design review a little over a week ago. They made one suggestion. It's falling down. They felt that these three dormers that face the adjacent plaza were unnecessary and busy the roof. So we did do a revised sketch, but...
That's a hard comment.
Yeah. It does simplify the roof line. It costs less to do it, but it's completely up to schedule for us to really, we want to go with a submitted package, what recommendations of design review.
I thought this looked funny from far away, but...
We have a number of extras here.
Which one?
For the record, Raoul Lizarri from Holmes McGrath with engineers and last surveys for the project, I'll pass around the same graphic that's being presented. So on the moving aspects of it, we're practically taking over the western side of the existing lot and redeveloping it. So we have all new drainage system, proposed parking. He also collects the roof runoff from this building. There's three locations for drainage systems, one on the front parking, one on the side parking, and one on the rear service area. With septic system, the existing building currently has two title five septic system, one in the front and one in the back. Them two are going to be removed. There's going to be a proposed new septic system for this one building, located on the backside of the service area. Septic system for the eastern building that's not being touched for, for this project remains in place, and the septic system are all title five. The graphic that I showed out shows the setbacks that are more than what the existing building currently has. The lot, it actually has two different zoning districts. There is a public zoning district to both Route twenty-eight and Davisville, and all the proposed work, except for the driveways and curb cuts, are outside of the public use, zoning area. The rear of the lot is partly adjacent to some residential. We're enhancing some of the setbacks to that. The existing driveway on the back is roughly about five, six feet from that property line. We're increasing it to ten feet and more.
I'm Dan Seline, landscape architect, Horiichi Seline. Yeah, our role has been really to develop a plan to plan, you know, based upon a site plan that was prepared by Holmes McGrath. You know, one of the primary features of the, of the plan, or focuses of the plan is to, you know, create a beautiful new frontage, you know, to this property along East Falmouth Highway and, and also Davisville Road. Many of you are familiar with, with the recent development at, at the Dunkin' Donuts in, in the vicinity, that's with, which has a lovely landscape in, along the front with a stone wall and some beautiful flowers and, and trees and such. Our, our goal was to really sort of pick up on the spirit of that, of that plan and to extend the, the character and, and the delight of that landscape further down, down the street. So, so one of the main features along, at the corner and along East Falmouth Highway is a stone wall that will sort of wrap the radius of the, of the intersection and then extend in an easterly direction to the, to the curb cut. On the, on the street side of that, of that wall is a broad planting area of perennial, you know, perennial flowers and ornamental grasses, you know, which will, we think, distinguish this property, you know, in a very nice way. We also have several shade trees, you know, on the street side of that, of that planting or that, and wall feature. Down along Davisville Road, where the power lines sort of, sort of interfere with, or will interfere with the growth of, and have historically interfered with the growth of shade trees, we're proposing a row of flowering trees, and some crabapples, similar to what we had proposed, or have, have proposed and approved for, for the CBS at Davis Straits. We think that the flowering trees will really provide a really nice seasonal enhancement, you know, to the neighborhood, you know, blooming each, you know, each spring. Along the, the back of the property, there's an existing arborvitae hedge immediately behind the CBS that is providing some effective screening between the property and the butters to the south. This plan will extend that, that feature all the way to the easterly end of the, of the property. Within, you know, the, the parking area between the, the frontage and the, and the, and the building, you know, we're providing shade trees at all the, all of the parking lot islands, hardy crown covers and, and shrubs at all, at all the, the, the parking islands. A good number of ornamental shrubs that flower during different times of the year, rhododendrons, azaleas, you know, for spring bloom, hydrangeas, you know, for summer bloom, dillies for summer bloom, and, you know, so on, ornamental grasses for, for textural, you know, character throughout the year. To the, to the east of the CBS, between the CBS and, there's a, an ATM. We're developing what really, I think, will become like a small park-like space, you know, spaces wrapped in, in, you know, shrubbery, sort of creating a, a small open space of turf and, and with a, with a gripping of, of blue ala Cedars. And finally, the island at the drop-off is planted, you know, I think in a very sort of luxurious way, and should be, the shade tree flowering plants in a nice, very luxurious ground cover, you know, should, should create a beautiful setting there, you know, throughout the year. So happy to answer any questions you might have.
I just want to make a couple of more comments before receiving whatever questions or comments that, that you have. It was mentioned that the Design Review Committee, which issued a favorable recommendation in the form of a letter to you this week, did suggest that the three little dormers on the east side of the building that, that don't face the street be removed. There's one other change that was recommended that we've actually shown on plans for non-plan projects, and that is simply to widen the driveway right here that is on Davisville as just a service vehicle, from fourteen feet wide to sixteen feet wide. And this, this surface actually, an emergency truck should go over, but the fire department in Ed Street Borough asked for a wider driveway at this point, actually requested eighteen, but as indicated to Holmes McGrath that sixteen feet would be sufficient. It was possible to adjust this to be sixteen feet wide here without increasing lot coverage more than a couple of hundredths of a percent, remaining at seventy-one percent of overall lot coverage. And so I do have those plans, I just want to make sure, to file up for the record that show the sixteen foot wide driveway. That's the only change on those plans. The lot coverage is an issue because in business, two zoning district, lot coverage, my right is limited to seventy percent, and the lot coverage as shown is seventy-one percent. But that's actually a reduction from the existing lot coverage of seventy-four percent down to seventy-one percent. And the zoning bylaw provides that the Planning Board, by special permit, may permit lot coverage for commercial projects in excess of seventy percent, provided that certain criteria are met, limitations on the number of traffic trips per day, certification by the engineer, that there will not be an increase of, or a ten percent of runoff, it's actually going to be a decrease of three percent of runoff on the site because the amount of coverage that actually... ...regarding soil loss. We've met all those criteria, submitting a... We've met all those criteria submitting a plan that specifically addresses the issue of number of trips per day in relation to the properties, the criteria under that bylaw. So we're at 70% existing bylaw, we're at 71% as proposed, and that can be approved by the planning board by special permit, and we ask that should do so. I have a couple of decent information that I think the public would be interested in, and many who are maybe interested. And that is that this project, if approved by the planning board, will be expected to begin construction in the fall of 2015, so more than a year from now. That timing relates to anticipated completion of the CBS store at Davis Straits. CBS doesn't want to have two stores in construction and out of operation at the same time in the same town. So that's that timing. And when the existing building has been torn down, there would be a temporary pharmacy just as at the Davis Straits site. And the existing pharmacy, I understand, would be in this area of the second building on the site. To summarize, we're removing a larger building than we're proposing for the same use that already exists with significant improvements all around. The criteria for the issuance of a special permit is, of course, set forth in the zoning bylaw, Section 240-216. And to grant a special permit, the special permit granting authority should make a determination that the proposed use will not have adverse effects which overbalance its beneficial effects on the neighborhood or the town, taking into account the particular characteristics of the site. We don't think that this plan has any adverse effects and any beneficial effects, and that should be easy for you to make that determination. And that the proposed use will be in harmony with the general purpose intended of the zoning bylaw, that the site is adequate in size and suitable for the proposed use, that the impact on traffic flow and safety will be only positive, certainly the impact on neighborhood visual character will be positive, and so on throughout the whole list of criteria that the special permit granting authority, in this case, the planning board, takes into account to make the decision. How we'd be delighted to answer questions that you have.
Paul, you had a question.
I'll go first.
Go ahead, go first. And Jim, you had a question.
No.
I think...
What's going to go?
Thank you for your explanation. I think there's a lot of very positive things in this development, and there are a couple of questions I have as well. Some of the positive things is I do like the access moving away from the intersection at Davis Straits. I'm impressed with the fact that you're keeping the size small while maintaining that area. I looked at the architectural drawings. I thought they were very representative of the floor, and I think that's a very good move. I also looked at the landscape drawings, and I think that's a very clever idea to identify some of the things that the Donuts carry it here. And a lot of the landscaping on the south side where the residents are is also very impressive. The questions I have are a couple. One is the traffic, the only access. If you're coming north on Davisville Road, you have to go onto 28 and come around. Is that correct?
No.
Because this was indicated as truck access only.
Oh, but only when it gets to, I'm glad you asked that question so I can clarify because obviously it wasn't clear. This is where the do not enter signs will be for just passing the building over here. But this will be a full service entrance and exit. So cars can exit this way, cars can come in, but then they return into the parking field here. Now, cars that are going to use the drive-through over here, first, obviously, people get to know the site after they use it once. Cars traveling east on 28 will use this. Cars south on Old Beating House Road, take the left turn here and go in. Cars, obviously, from the east heading west will use this access to do this. While somebody coming north on Davisville Road could enter the site like this and travel all the way around the building to get to the drive-through, it's just as likely, if not more so, that they would take this turn and, you know, actually a more direct fashion, go that way. So the contention is that the access to the drive-through and the exit will be over here. Worth pointing out that the state is in the process of improving this intersection. One of the features of that is that the sidewalk will be moved. It's actually on the D'Addario Parkway now. It'll be moved to the street. That's the state's plan. And by doing so, we actually increase the area that we're able to land. But anyway, that's a long answer to what's actually happening here. This is a full entrance-exit from the site.
But you couldn't get to the drive-up window without going around the building in a clockwise fashion?
That's correct. And it's sort of intentionally, again, people would think the better way to do that is to go like this, not to go like this, but it would work.
Thank you. Second question is, there are three existing septic systems there, about 5,000 square feet, 5,000 gallons per day, and they're going to be replaced with one about a third or quarter of the size.
Well, that's a question that I asked, if that's the question.
Yeah, if that's the question, well, because it says refer to the records of the health department, and it's not clear, is that based on what a pharmacy would produce? Is that, what's the basis of that tremendous reduction in flow?
The criteria for the retail space is 50 gallons per day per thousand square feet, so it comes out to be 756 gallons a day. That's the proposed system for the CBS. The existing system of the two that are being removed adds up to 4,675. I don't know what the criteria was for the size of those two systems, but those two are being moved. The retail, the proposed retail for the CBS is only 773 gallons a day.
So it's based on square foot records, not necessarily the health department records?
Well, the health department has records based on the sanitary COVID Title V.
Right, okay. Thank you. A final question is, there's a note in here that the update property post office taking in rear driveway to be removed. I'm not sure what that means.
I don't know if it shows on the existing plan. Well, it does. There is essentially unauthorized, unpaved driveway that's used by the post office, and some post office employees parked in this area. I'm not sure by agreement, George Demas should know. Apparently it is by agreement. And that cut through driveway is going to be eliminated. Thank you.
Jim?
I think I can tell, I guess the landscape plan that was just delivered, on the rendering we have here, I heard you talk about the stone wall. I don't see it on the rendering at all, but I think I see it from this distance. Is that the area in the corner?
Yes, it is there, and the rendering is just a conceptual and early stage and should not be taken as the actual landscape plan and the plan of record with the stone wall and all the other plants and the specific list of trees and so on. Is this...
But not the one we have here, not this one? Because it doesn't show them either. This one doesn't show the extended plants all the way down the end, and it doesn't show the stone wall, so I'm just...
But you're looking at a Holmes McGrath...
Yeah, that's not the landscape plan.
It's not the landscape...
Okay, it's marked up to have...
We did get a request from the planning staff today to bring an additional copy of the landscape plan, so before I forget, I'm just going to give you that to file.
I just couldn't see it too far away.
Other questions? Yes, Ralph?
Yes, just not so much a question, but for the engineer, it's helpful if you use those little arrows indicating a traffic, whether it's one-way, two-way traffic, and those aren't depicted on this. It would help us to understand the traffic flow that Mr. Hahn described to us. The traffic, I assume the traffic on the east side of the building is two-way and then splits off into one-way through the drive-through. Is that correct?
That's right. And it's counterclockwise, rather, clockwise around. Clockwise. So that is going this way.
Okay.
So the driver's side of the cars would be against the building, of course, and they're stacking to meet the bylaw in this area.
Good. So if people entering from Davisville cannot get to the drive-through, they must go over...
Well, they can't get there this way. Among other things, it wouldn't work when they get over here. This is going to be signed that there is...
Drive-through being done only. Yes, okay. All right, thank you.
Yeah, that was my concern too. I mean, if you're coming in from Davisville, you're coming in that first curb cut, driving around the building, coming down, going around, and then you either have to go out and make a left-hand turn onto Route 28, make another left onto Davisville, or drive through the parking lot again. It seems awful convoluted to me.
Is that a question?
That's just a comment.
Are there questions, concerns?
Hmm, I don't have any questions.
Okay. I was concerned with the CBS on Davis Straits that the headlights going out onto Route 28 would be bright, and so there was going to be a privet hedge put there. But that's just because, I'm aware of it, I go past that all the time. I don't go past this, and I don't know whether it would be an equal concern here.
Do you think, Dan Seline, do you have an answer to that?
I heard a question. We, well, I think the wall and the plantings along Route 28 and Davisville, for the length of the wall, you know, the plantings will certainly accomplish the same as the hedge did at the Davis Straits site. Similar height and even more opaque because the wall is solid, of course. The down along this stretch, the idea is for us to use root period road branching, you know, specimen trees, you know, to create sort of a different but similarly effective, you know, screen between the parking lot and the road along that stretch.
You're talking about diffusion of light?
Right.
The wall will be what? Because the wall that's in front of the bank right now is maybe two feet high, I think?
Yeah, the, you know, this, I think this should be, I'm not sure if we follow the height of the concrete. Yeah, I would imagine this would be 30 inches or 36 inches high.
Oh, okay.
And so, so higher than your desk, you know, certainly probably about this high.
Then that answers my question.
Certainly above headlight.
Yeah, that answers the question right there.
And then, of course, the plantings will, any of them will be above the wall, so they're below the wall. We don't want to cover the wall entirely.
Right. Yeah, the wall is, I was very pleased to hear that you're going to continue that because that is a pleasant aspect in that area there, that wonderful that you're continuing it, I think.
Thank you.
Other questions, comments? Yeah, go ahead, Paul.
I was going to raise the issue of timing and coordination of the construction that the state has, but you think you've answered that by saying you're not going to do this for another year. It's my understanding you'd like to be doing this intersection beginning this fall.
Yes, I understand.
And I was concerned about the coordination construction between the two projects. What's the timeframe for building this from D'Addario?
I think, George will currently approve, but I think the intention would be to start after Labor Day next year and to finish before Memorial Day of 2006.
Like eight-month structure period?
What's the timeline, is he distracted?
Thank you.
Okay, I'll have anybody...
One more question. On the proposed sidewalk, I see at the front of the store, it says proposed flush curb. On the other sides, it's all says raised berm and raised curb. Does that mean that the drive area is flush with the walkway in that area?
Right, this is an approach from CBS. They like the ease for people to walk from the parking space onto the sidewalk without stepping up to the six inches of a raised curb. So what we're having here is wheel stops in all of the parkings that are facing the building. The ones that are not facing the building, we either have a kickback berm or a raised curb.
Okay, as long as there's something for people to know when to make sure they stop.
Other questions? Brian, do you have any concerns, comments?
There was a comment from the engineering staff about the drive-through, but I discussed it with the town engineer, and I think we're fine. And we're not going to recommend the move at any rate.
Okay. Now, go on to the public for any concerns or comments, from the public comments. If you have, yes, Nancy, please come up to the podium.
I have had experience driving by this location, and Mr. Leary made the comment about the traffic circulating out onto 28. And this is really fairly active area, in my experience anyhow, a fairly active intersection. And I haven't read these plans in the office. If this exit out onto 28 is fairly close to the corner, it seems to me that this is a very difficult place to come out onto 28 with that intersection and has a traffic light. And I cannot remember because I haven't driven in and out of that, but the exit, this is shoved, well, that's, that sounds implied, and I don't mean to be implied. It is concentrated in the west end of the lot. If the traffic were coming out farther east onto 28, but it's coming out, in my understanding, fairly close to the intersection, and I would view this as a problem. I have another comment. I'm curious about the comments about the septic system. I don't know, and does this plan take into consideration that the pharmacy? I've worked in chemistry, so I know that sometimes you have to make special considerations for what you're putting into your drainage system from chemistry. Does that apply at all to a pharmacy? You're decreasing the size. Is that anything to take into consideration? Thank you. Thank you.
Is there anyone else from the public who wishes to? Yes, please come up to the podium.
Bob and Saulus, AMT Davisville, of Butters. Three questions. The first question is around the actual, I've heard a couple of things about the signage. Is it "do not enter" coming in from Davisville? Is it "service vehicles only," and I think I heard both of those being used? So the question is, are service trucks going to be coming in primarily through Davisville or primarily from 28?
My understanding is that they're coming in from Davisville. Is that correct? Okay. And the "do not enter" is there at the corner essentially of the building because they don't want cars to be going around in that circulation. That is for service vehicles only. The cars, upon entering Davisville, would have to take an immediate left to go through the parking area.
So that's the primary service vehicle entrance?
Yes.
Secondly, the service area was referred to, I'm not quite sure who that is, but there was also a reference to the fencing for dumpsters and so forth. Similar, I think I believe it's similar to the existing fence in Slayton Park.
That's to the back of the building.
Which is where we buy.
I understand that. And it should be totally screened. From their drawings of it, it's nice fencing. So you really should not, my understanding is you should not be able to see anything from where you're buying. Is that, again, correct? Is that a correct understanding?
Chairman, you might want to point out that what he's talking about is the bottom picture there. That's what he would be looking at.
Yeah, and I can't, you know, we can't see it if anybody wants to hold it up.
To clarify, when he said "similar to," he meant similar to another proposed CBS project, not similar to what's there now?
To Davis Straits.
Correct. It's different from what's at that property now. It's like this picture on the bottom.
You probably could not see that from that far away. So you can see what it's supposed to look like. And it will be thoroughly screened.
The third final question. There was nothing discussed about signage, and I just don't know if that's part of what's discussed today or not, whether that includes the businesses in the area, particularly if there's any blockage from the new proposed buildings in terms of the dormers and so forth. That would block the opening of that, that are also businesses.
That was not discussed. Does anybody wish to comment on that from the project?
Thank you.
Thank you.
Kevin, thank you. I'd like to counter, but I note that all of the signage requires a permit from the town with review by the design review committee. So we will be doing that in due course. And that the signage has not been reviewed by the design review committee at this stage, which is typical. And isn't intended to be part of this special permit presentation. We are obviously reducing the number of businesses on this side of this building.
Are there other questions from the public? Yes.
Hi, I'm Larry Jacobson. I live at Ten Menino. I knew, I said my neighborhood. I'm just curious about sidewalks and whether the sidewalks have been considered. It might be described to me, but I don't, I can't see them on the picture, perhaps because of the distance. The second thing is impacts on bicyclists and pedestrians. Have those been adequately considered? So I can only ask you, Adam, if you feel those things have been adequately considered.
I can answer the first one, that they are on the drawing, and the project won't put them in because the whole corner there is being redone by the state. So the state is putting those sidewalks in, and they'll be pulled further towards the highway and presumptively also Davisville Road.
I'd like to point out that Mr. Leary and I did meet with the principal of East Felman School and the facilities director of the school. One of their requests was to see if the state could redo the sidewalk and extend it all the way from Davisville Road to the school on the west side of Davisville Road all the way from 28. And that's part of their project. So that's improved. I do have a couple of comments that I could, in response to Nancy Hayward's comments. The driveway on Davisville Road is the same driveway that exists today in services, considerably larger retail buildings that's already there. It is, in fact, towards the east end of the property. And you couldn't move the driveway further to the east because then it would be right in front of the Tedeschi's store. So here's the intersection. Here's the end of the property. Here's the driveway to the Tedeschi's store. Repeat again, but read from the traffic report that the proposed redevelopment with less overall building area is expected to reduce particular trips. It was determined that there was adequate stopping in intersection site distance at both intersections. And based on the intersection capacity analysis, it was determined that the project will have no impact upon intersection operations in the study area and no improvements necessary to standard accommodate the project. They expect it will have a net positive result on the traffic. In fact, the capacity of the intersection is being improved by the state in work that's going to be done before this project gets underway.
Other comments from the public? Okay, done.
I have a question about the layout of the parking lot. Just curious what the thinking is, and I'm sure you have a good answer. I see you're directing the Davisville traffic around the front and around this circle. What would be the problem with letting them come behind the service entrance and go directly in?
Well, for one thing, that, you know, there's a, there's a conflict between the big service vehicles, trash collection and so on, and the passenger vehicles. But if the traffic did go this way, and it's only wide enough as designed for the one-way traffic flow, cars getting here are going the wrong way to enter the drive-thru.
Well, with that long berm that's there, yes.
Well, even if, first of all, this is a stacking area. And to have cars come here and take a sharp left into the queuing doesn't seem to work.
Okay.
In response, and in response to what Mr. Leary said earlier, you know, the traffic coming up Davisville Road to access the CBS is just a portion of the traffic coming from, you know, all the directions. There is no reason to think that somebody coming south on Old Meeting House Road or traveling east on 28 or coming from the east will not use this intersection to use the drive-thru. It's certainly true, as Mr. Leary said, that there will be people who, you know, enter the site, and they come in here, and they'll park here or they'll park here. Or they might do that even if they tend to go out of the intersection. The number of vehicles, I mean, this isn't a fast food restaurant. This is a home pickup, which is much fewer trips, which is indicated also by the fact that it's only by law requires only, you know, much smaller number of queues. So, yes, there will be some people who enter the site and travel around to it. And it'd be more efficient for them to do this. But if people do this, it works. They're driving in here, just as other people are driving in here to park, to go into the store. They go a little further to use the drive-thru, which is, it seems to be in a location that where this site works. Again, we're actually reducing traffic. Making one curb cut instead of two curb cuts is a better location. This is the best plan, I think, we've been able to come up with, and we think it's a very good plan. And we hope you do, too. But if you have other ways to do it, we should consider it. But I don't think there is a better way to do it. And this is what's needed in order for the owner of the property to be willing to take this existing building down and build this new building with all of its benefits.
Okay, I do have a question because in our notice in here, the public hearing, it's 14,718 square feet, yet on the drawing. And by your testimony, the building will be 13,020 square feet.
Well, actually, the 13,000 figure is the footprint.
Okay.
There is a mezzanine, which is related storage across this portion of the building. It's a relatively small area. In my presentation, I mentioned the 14,000 square foot figure a number of times, although I set a bit over, and I then corrected myself. The code is 14,718.
Okay, so the two figures, the one includes the mezzanine, but the other is the footprint.
And certain calculations, such as lock coverage, of course, are based on footprint, whereas the septic flow, parking requirements and so on are based on total floor area, which is the higher figure.
Thank you. Yes.
Just a clarification. You mentioned that you might be changing the signs. The signs on the building aren't going to change, is that correct? You're not going to put more signs on the building than shown in these elevations?
The renderings that you have should not be considered approval of the signs. We're not asking for approval of the signs. Signs, and I don't think that signage is part of the purview of the planning board.
I'm asking if they're going to be substantially different.
Sorry?
Are they going to be substantially different than what's shown here?
I'm sure the answer is no, but.
Before putting the renderings together and the elevations, they were reviewed by Quaint Signs, which is the CBS sign vendor. My expectation is that they will come in for a package that's not nearly identical, identical to what's being shown.
And that will be pretty much identical to what we have on CBS's Davis Straits, correct?
Exactly.
Remember, we went back and forth over that, so. Other questions from the board? Okay. This is the first time we've seen it. We both have, we have both site plan review and special permit, so we will be looking at this again when, Brian?
The hearing is at the moment open. Chairman, so if the pleasure of the board feel a little hesitant or insufficient information or your questions have been answered, you can either close your hearing to go into advisement, and we'll send a motion for it.
So I'd like to know what the brothers of the board are. Do we keep it open further, or have you got enough information?
I personally have enough information.
You personally have enough? Okay. So do you? Okay.
Has there been any public correspondence or?
I don't believe so. I don't have any in the correspondence file folder.
One more person tells me. There is no other correspondence.
And is everyone satisfied? So at this point, yes.
Should we consider leaving it open for written comment from the public?
I was willing to leave it open. Brian said if we're all satisfied, we could close it at this point. But this is the first time anybody has heard anything about it, so, including us. And there might be other questions that come up. So maybe we should just leave it open until the next meeting to see whether we get any written comments coming in or whether the board has any further comments or questions that we want to ask the applicants. Does that make sense?
I think it does.
And if there are no others, then we can, at that point, close it. Does that sound good?
I'd be willing to leave it open.
Okay, until what date, Brian?
The next, the second?
Your next meeting will be September the 2nd. So if you want to keep it open, then it would be to keep it open until Tuesdays, September 2nd.
Okay.
Seven o'clock, here in the town hall.
All right, so we shall do that. And do we need a motion to keep it open until then?
Yes, you do.
We do, because, okay, so.
I move that we keep this open until September 2nd at seven o'clock?
Here in town hall?
Yes.
Okay.
Oh, at 6:30.
Yeah, that's right.
Oh, 6:30, sorry.
Habit. I live in terror that I'll be wandering in here at seven one time after many years of habit. All right, so is there a second?
Second.
Okay.
It's not the time of 6:30.
6:30, yes, it's been corrected. All in favor?
Aye.
Foes, abstained. Okay, thank you. And Brian, these are the new plans, so you can add those to what you have.
What about a landscape plan to go with that?
Yeah, this is confusing now.
I'm not fishing. I like those little dormers, but I'm not going to say a word to this matter.
Next on our agenda is continuation of public hearing. Applicant GSTVSLLC, special permit modification to allow for storage of non-agricultural equipment and materials located at 25 Crocker Road, East Felman, BSS Design. Now, as the board knows, we kept this open on the applicant's attorney's request because she wanted to have a response from town council. Our planner wrote an opinion. And town council has said, no, because the planning board is capable of making any decision on that. So there will not be anything forthcoming. So, from town council. So tonight, what I would like to do is ask whether there are any further questions that the board might have, and further whether there are any new comments from the public. I'm not rehashing what we've already heard. Does the board have any further questions or comments on this special permit modification that we're being asked to review?
Well, I have one. Ready?
Yeah.
So at our previous hearing, Ms. Moynihan's assertion was that it was not a matter of how much nursery is there, just the fact that if any is there, that they still have standing. And we did do a site visit, and there is some nursery material growing, although it's a small portion of the activity on the lot. So I guess it'll be up to us, then, to determine what percentage is viable?
Whether it's substantial enough to call it a nursery and whether the requests are reasonable under that to continue it. And I'm open for any kind of comments on that.
Well. Well...
Yeah, we haven't closed it.
No, we haven't closed it.
Right. It's informational.
And we do not have a draft motion.
We do not have a draft motion. Okay?
Right.
So if there are questions or comments, because we can go to the public too for any additional questions, new information, we've had quite a lot of comments and information, and there's no point in hearing the same thing over again. Yes, Joe?
I definitely believe that, I saw it as a nursery, I still see it, but I don't see the uses that I saw inside accessory to nursery.
Okay.
That's, you know, so, I don't, I'm not saying I'm, for the whole thing, I see one part. I think we need to redraft or discuss, that's what we need to discuss. If it's up to us to determine that those uses are accessory to a nursery use in order to continue, and I think we need to have some discussion on that. Myself, I think the noise that it generates, those uses, to me, belong on a contractor's yard where house, the setbacks are to be a lot further away than this. And I have a problem with adding to additional uses or extending things beyond what I see as nursery delivery trucks and nursery plantings and trucks coming and going. I saw processing and...
So essentially, what you're saying is, no, the usages that are going on currently...
Well, I'm not prepared to draft it right now on my comments, but that's my thought. I'm offering out for discussion, see what the rest of you think.
Let me help the board with it. Tonight, you're having a listening.
Okay.
Your hearing, gathering information, then you will have, once you have enough information, close the hearing, then you will have a full discussion.
Okay, so this is not a discussion. Sorry?
Then you will...
I thought we asked for discussion, I will...
No. Any comments on...
That's the process.
Nope, I'll sit.
No, because we don't have, we haven't closed the hearing yet to have the discussion for a decision. We're still, I wasn't quick enough. We're still listening.
I got the picture.
Okay. So are there any new comments on this?
Good evening, Madam Chairman, members of the board. Edward Kirk, Randy Caposa, the meeting began. The end of the first hearing, first time we get a hearing on this, ended due to time constraints, and we were allowed to move on to another matter, and I did not have enough to respond to some further advice by the board. At the last meeting, it ended somewhat promptly also because there was going to be some discussion for some opportunity requested by Mr. W. Kirk. So I haven't really had a good response since the first hearing.
These plans are sort of the history of the site. This plan is back in 2004.
You're on the way, I think. Can the board see now? Okay.
So the 2004 plan shows a total of one, two, three, four, I think, seven or eight greenhouses, and something called a tree farm back here. This is the area for which the applicant, or not this applicant, but Francisco Tavares, the owner of the property at the time, obtained a special permit to have some non-agricultural storage. And that, that's here. And that was, and in 2008, the rest of the property, all the way out to here, was approved for boat storage. The first plan that was submitted by the current applicant, GSTVSLC, that bought the property in 2011 from Francisco Tavares, no longer the owner, broke the area out into this former, this is the original special permit area, then this area for material storage, another area for material storage, and another area for material storage, including vehicles. The board asked for more material as we went along, and they've submitted a new plan, which, together with the itemization of material and vehicles, now we have, this is the original area approved for storage in 2004. In Area C, we have 29, if you look at the list, total them up, 29 pieces of equipment and vehicles in this area, 400 yards of pine bark, 100 yards of lawn, 25 tons of three-quarter inch stone. That's a tenant Area C. You may recall that there are three tenants on the property, a tree, two tree companies and a landscape company, none of which are in the nursery business. Area B, tenant Area B, there's a total of 16 pieces of equipment and vehicles, 1,000 yards of wood chips, 25 cords of wood. Over here, Area A, tenant Area, 22 pieces of equipment and vehicles, 100 cords of wood, and 200 yards of pine bark. Between the time of this plan being submitted and this plan being submitted, there appears something called large tree nursery. And that is the extent, apparently alleged, of the nursery on this piece of property. Prior to the last meeting, prior to that, the representation seemed to have been made, not that it was a nursery, but there were pictures of a man standing in front of it that looked like potted plants. So, but if the representation now is that that is the nursery, I guess you have to decide, is that really a legitimate claim? What equipment belongs to this so-called tree farm? What employees belong to the tree farm? And does that really, something that size compared to what was there? Does that really get over the threshold? And of course, the second part of the equation is, what's the connection between all the activity that they want and equipment that they want this special permit for and the nursery so-called? There's no connection. And the bylaw says that in order to get this kind of a special permit, there has to be a pre-existing connection between a nursery use and this other activity. So that if you start off with legitimate agricultural use, such as a commercial nursery, and you end up, your business ends up expanding a little bit, if you go over the accessory thresholds, 50% of the lot, 30% of floor area, you no longer have an accessory use, if indeed it was customary and incidental to begin with. So that's the purpose of this bylaw. This is being presented to you completely backwards. I think you heard Mr. Tavares say he hasn't operated a nursery in over four years, as a result of which he's running a contractor's yard. Trying to now back that into this bylaw, now that it's a representation that it's a nursery. But there's no, the businesses that are there now were never there when it was operating a nursery. So we don't believe that this, this does leave qualifications, threshold qualifications for either, either that it's a nursery, or that there's the requisite contemporaneous connection between these new uses and alleged commercial use. And you've heard from the neighbors, they've told you what happens there. I won't go into a long way, but...
We can't, we're not going to repeat this, Mr. Kirk.
No, that's right. But I want you to keep that in mind, because there was a very significant testament of the impact this would have. And the starting point is, the building commissioner determined this was a contractor's yard. No appeal or taken from that. I think that's exactly what it is. And the effort here is to try to say that even though they're within 300 feet of residential dwellings, the contractor's yard cannot be allowed, they're trying to call it something else and hope that you will accept that in order to allow the use of a contractor's yard, so we're asking you to leave that in the application.
Thank you. Is there anything else new? We've heard, well, I should probably say, we've heard about the noise, we've heard about the fires from the equipment, so is there anything new?
Other than recent noise, no.
Okay. Then we've heard about the noise.
Okay.
Erin Devlin, 73th Evening Drive, so I am the last house where the current contract is. My concern is that since the last town meeting, a no trespassing sign has been put on top of a six-foot fence on top of my property. I called the zoning officer for advice on my behalf. She called Mr. Tavares' attorney, and she reported that she advised him to put that no trespassing sign on all of the properties, all of the, I mean, surrounding areas of his properties. And to my knowledge and conversations with other property owners, I'm the only property that this sign is on, and that's concerning to me. So I know that Ollie had requested that either be removed or set back, and neither has been done, so I'm just hoping that that can be something that can be taken into consideration today.
Thank you.
I feel a little targeted being the only property.
Thank you. Mr. Caposa.
I'm 100% up to speed about what's going on, but two things. Contractors know of these spots that there is no testing. It's just the old place, and that's on you guys, you've got to fix that. The second part of this is, you've already tried to close the meeting. I would implore you to not close the hearing until you're done with your discussion. You make way too many mistakes and have way too many questions during the discussion period.
Mr. Caposa, this is not new in regard to this particular applicant?
Well, it's new to the board because...
No, it's not, I'm sorry.
It's out of order.
It really is out of order.
The board needs it open during discussion.
Mr. Caposa.
Thank you for your time. Appreciate it.
Okay. Is there anything else new? Yes, sir.
Please give your name for the record. The larger apartment owned properties. I wanted to speak the last time, but you decided to go on because you have this problem with the, whether a nursery exists or not. I believe that people on the neighborhood are very patient with Francisco Tavares for a long time, even before the 2004 application for special storage permit. Trying to be with neighbors and putting up with some disturbances, overall, like most people, we try to wind up business, others likewise. An example of our tolerance was when Francisco Tavares applied for a boat storage permit in 2008. Concerns were raised by the neighbors, but no objections to the permit, and the permit was granted. So I'm going to skip over this, read more about the noise and so forth. So I'm going to skip that. I'm just going to say this, though. The board has heard from the other side, too, the nursery business is not going well, it's a financial problem and so forth. We've all heard that. We feel sorry for them, but that's not a, but it's a neighbor's concern. And the encroachment, we talked about that, slow, greedy encroachment. One of the doctors, in 2004, when I stopped my endorsement for the special permit, I refused, because I told them what was going to happen. What has resulted was even beyond my imagination, the screen subleasing a property to three tenants, contractors with their disturbing activities, and with no connection to the teeny-tiny nursery, except to pay a affordable rent at expense by neighbors. Based on William Moynihan's reasons for granting a special permit, the opposed family trust, seven acres, or this GSTVSLC property, could also request a special permit. He recently purchased some dwarf fruit trees, and had a history of farming on the property. And also, my dad was in the construction business, had bulldozers parked there, and trucks, just as Mr. Tavares said, his father had those equipment on that property. So we could apply for a special permit ourselves. Wouldn't this be nice? Crocker Road could rank second to Thomas Landers for contractor activity. Well, anyway. So I think most of us feel we've done our work, and presented our testimony, and show you what action we would like you to take, to issue no permit to GSTVSLC, the company that is responsible for the very unhappy state of affairs, and to revoke this 2004 special permit because of violations of that storage site also. You people went down and made a site inspection. We haven't, I don't know whether entitled to report something on that, but anyway, you can see what was done, what was tried to, remedies that were tried and made. Sure, you do have, you're anticipating a, the board moving down to see the property. Anyway, these actions that we, this action which you want to do, turned down this request will result in a more peaceful, safer, and much nicer neighborhood. Please stop this uncaring encroachment. Thank you.
Thank you. And I did promise you that you could speak today, so that's why, it's nothing new, but is there anyone else who wishes to say something? Yes, Laura?
Thank you, Madam Chairman, members of the board. I just wanted to comment on the response from town council of the legal opinion. That request, if I recall, was from the planning board. The last meeting, the planning board agreed that that should be made to town council. So I think, I understand what the response is, I'm a little surprised. So I think, I understand what the response is, I'm a little surprised. I don't think I've ever seen or heard of a case where a board asks for a legal opinion and council says no. But I think the importance of that needs to be reiterated for the following reasons. Two questions have been raised upon by board members tonight. I think it was you, Ms. Kirk, who said whether there's substantial enough nursery area to call it a nursery. Mr. Fox had mentioned that he did not see these uses as accessory to the nursery. Those are legal questions and are of vital importance to this application. And I would submit to you that the way this bylaw is worded, there is no need to determine the extent of the nursery use. There is no need to determine if it's substantial enough. Because our bylaw just says you have to have a nursery use. That's what you have to look at, is the definition of nursery, not how much. Also, the question is not whether the storage uses are accessory to nursery uses, because that would be a byright use allowed under state law. There would not be any need for a special permit. There's no regulation of the nursery use under state law. This property, almost seven acres, could be used completely as a nursery with this type of activity and even greater activity, 7:00 AM to 7:00 PM, Monday through Sunday, with absolutely no regulation by the town, because it's allowed under state law. And what we're trying to do here is to bring it under the purview of a special permit with conditions. And we know people do not want the property to be used for anything. We get that. But that is not realistic. It's just not realistic. It's a commercially used piece of property that's been used since 1920. It's going to be used for something. If not this use that's subject to regulation by the planning board through conditions on hours of operation, what can be there, what can't be there? It can be a full-blown nursery, all six, seven acres of it, going seven days a week. I'm sure the neighbors do not want that. So that's the reality of it. That's the reason why I requested a legal opinion. Also, Mr. Kirk said, the question is whether there's a pre-existing connection between this storage use and the nursery. That's not what our bylaw requires either. So I urge you, when you're deliberating on this, to have a copy of the bylaw in front of you, to look at the specific wording of this 240, what we call the M section. It's very, very important to look at the wording yourself, to decide what you have to ask yourselves based on the wording of the bylaw, because nothing that I've heard tonight is in that bylaw. The reason none of that is in that bylaw is because when that bylaw was drafted, after many meetings with contractors like Mr. Cabosa and Mr. Tavares and others in the community who came to and said, "We need this kind of bylaw. We have equipment and vehicles that we don't have a place for. The building commissioner is coming after us because we have all these storage areas going on. We're taking our nursery vehicles or our vehicles that we're using in our operations, and we're using them off-site. We need your assistance." And the planning board crafted this bylaw to assist people like Mr. Tavares. That's why the bylaw was created, to allow storage areas. It wasn't to have a pre-existing connection to something that went on years ago in the past. All you had to do was show that these types of uses were there before. That's all. So that, again, so I would ask you, please look at that bylaw carefully. Have it in front of you. The wording of it is very important. I'd just like to address a couple of statements that Mr. Kirk made. He said that Mr. Tavares had represented that the property had not been operated as a nursery for 40 years. That is incorrect. You have in your file the history of pine land arms that has been under operation since the 1920s. We also have other nursery areas other than the one pointed out to by Mr. Kirk. And I think you've seen those, they are clearly marked on the plan, so I'd just like to correct that. You do not need to look at what equipment, what employees, what the size of the nursery is compared to other past uses. Those are not relevant criteria under the bylaw. And lastly, the transfer of ownership is really not relevant here. It's the same family, the same people controlling this property. Businesspeople often transfer real estate from one entity to another. That's what occurred here. There's no change of ownership or sale that took place. It's the Tavares family, it's always been the Tavares family. As far as the setbacks go, you do have the right, under this particular section of the bylaw, to lessen setbacks if you determine that the buffers are sufficient. Here you have fencing around the entire property, and you have substantial vegetation. You could also condition the permit so that certain nursery areas that are labeled on the plan be maintained in those locations if you think those are workers' buffers as well. In any event, those are my comments. I do think the opinion is important, that's why we asked for it. There are some very involved legal twists here that you keep getting thrown at you. And with respect to those who are throwing them at you, I think if you really look at just the language of this bylaw, it's pretty plain. It really is plain. If that needs to be changed, then that should be Town Meeting's job, not the planning board's job. If this application, out of this application, some say, "Well, wait a second, what did we do 10 years ago? You know, maybe we should be looking at the nature and extent of the nursery that's there." And that has to go to Town Meeting. It's not for this planning board to import that into the bylaw. It's not what the bylaw says. Thank you.
Thank you. Yes, sir.
I'm going to burn up a little, it's a nine plus five. My name's Larry Jacobson, I live at 10 Medino Avenue. I'm a butter, and I didn't know I'm opposed to issuing or attending any permits, and I'll try to just devote, spend time on the things that are new. First of all, to the points that Ms. Monahan just raised, a lot of description about the intent of the so-called 240-38.m. Now, I don't, I'm just not prepared to accept an disinterested person's, an interested person, a person with an interest description of what the intent might have been, or what the intent was. And I don't think it's reasonable to do so. Perhaps if we had the Town Council weighing in or something, I might be able to. But I'm very skeptical of the assertion that it's there to handle, that that is created to handle this kind of assertion. I hope you are, too. I mean, was the intent to make an end run around any other reasonable town requirements, such as the 300-foot buffer, hours of operation, increased costs to the neighborhood, inconvenience to the neighbors, loss of property values? Was that the intent? Because that's what seems to be happening here. If it was, that's not a good thing at all. Was the intent to provide standing for contractor yards permits anywhere that plants have been previously grown and sold and he's found with them? Well, if that was the intent of the regulation, then all of he's found with all of us, including my property, which is just a little under an acre adjoining Randy Repose's. I'm sure that that was not, or I believe that it's unlikely that that was the intent of those regulations. I'm not sure what the intent was, but I doubt it was to justify the kind of activity that is underconsidered, because it's unreasonable. It's just unreasonable. So that's that. Just quickly also, I wanted to comment on a few of the things that Ms. Monahan, who, by the way, I've enjoyed listening to, and I've learned a lot from. A few of the comments she made at that July 8th meeting, and make a few comments on that plan. We keep hearing about an existing contractor's yard, and I don't know if anybody's brought this up, but I don't want it to be lost. That yard, contractor's yard is existing only to the extent that it's unlawful and unpermitted. Everybody knows it's unlawful and unpermitted. And Ms. Monahan admitted it was the first day, I think he was asked, she was asked by Mr. Herbst. We, it's stated in the application that it's 7.4 acres. My buddy Ronnie makes it at about 6.5, so it would be worth checking the acreage. Smaller parcels, it's harder to justify that kind of usage on smaller parcels. If it's 6.5 instead of 7.4, I think that's an important question. Ms. Monahan refers to economic benefits of the found with, but this is outside of her area of expertise, and I have an economist here tonight who can address this if you'd like. But for example, I think her statement was sort of offhand. I don't think she considered impacts on property values, taxes, lost taxes due to complying property values, impacts on neighbors, opportunity costs if they lose the fully advantage of the use of their yards, and then also eventually on the property values. She mentioned that the rents charged to the tenants there were affordable, and that should be a good thing overall. However, they're affordable because it's an unlawful use, and the people who rent the properties carry the risk that they're going to have to leave. They know that. That's why they rented at a reasonable rate. Everybody knows that. By the way, I'd expect the rents to raise if permits, if contractor's yards are, if it were to receive a permit that would allow contractor's yard, because there'd be no reason to rent those properties at an affordable cost. Right? I can't say that that's what had happened, but I'd have every expectation that it would. The tenants may not have any other place to go, I don't know, but the reason where they are is because those rates are affordable, and the reason they're affordable is because the usage is not permitted and it's unlawful. And then finally, there's assertion that the greatest benefit to the town would be issuing a permit so that the town could maintain some control over the way the site is used. This is the threat to allow the property to go back to being used as a nursery if it's not allowed, if we're not allowed to use it as a contractor's yard. So I say, if it's legal as a nursery, then so be it. Just bring it on, let's have it. Fine. But let's do something that's legal. Now, this is a slight, back to the revised plan now. This is the revised plan that was introduced last meeting. Just to make, to sum up the numbers that Attorney Plurk discussed, in total, the revised plan calls for 25 trucks in total, 13 trailers, 14 tractors, in addition to, you know, wood, equipment for wood preparation, drying, storage, et cetera. Pity the abutters. This is more equipment than would be required for the three contractors that are using that property now, so we can expect additional contractors on the property as, if it's permitted, I believe. And you can see that it's recently been cleaned up a bit. The property's been cleaned up, the dirt's been scraped, and it's obvious that you could squeeze more contractors in there. So there's 24 to 45 abutters, depending on how you count them. Somewhere between 24 and 45, I don't know exactly how to count them. If the average loss, if the average loss of their property values was, say, $5,000 apiece, we'd be talking about somewhere between, something in the neighborhood of $100,000 to a quarter million dollars of subsidy from the abutters to the applicant, unearned, totally unearned, and with no recompense to the abutters at all. If the abutters are losing, and this is a harder one, but let's just say for Ms. Devlin, the cost to her in terms of the value of her yard and to the 24 immediate abutters, let's say it's $3,000 a year. Let's say there are 12 people in that category. It's $36,000 a year, 10 years, $360,000 subsidy from the abutters to the applicant. It's completely undeserved and it's not fair. Mr. Tavares has described how difficult it is to get a nursery into that site, and that's because it's not suitable. It's simply not suitable as a nursery and certainly not as a contractor's yard. But if it's legal and he can make it happen, then so be it, let him do it. And that is it, I think.
Thank you. Anybody else? Yes, sir.
I'm John Walden, I live at 70 Terrence Avenue on Matt's, so the rate between Mr. Tavares' contractor's yard on Beatty House Road and this property. I was unable to make the previous meeting, I did submit a letter, and I'm an economist at Larry K. Park, too. In any event, I just want to make a couple of points. You know, I work for the Fishery Service and this whole, when we do big management plans for fishery management plans, we also have to do something called cumulative effects. Okay, it's under the National Environmental Policy Act. And in essence, what we have here is cumulative effects issue. There was a special storage area previously granted to Mr. Tavares, the bulk storage area. So right now, you're probably over 50% of that site is not agricultural use. Now, this, that new area will reset way up. So in essence, what is really happening here is that the site is being converted to a really large industrial. There's no, there's no real agriculture on that site. So, you know, Ms. Monahan points out that, you know, let the board decide if they want to change zone. And I agree with that. I don't think that we should go ahead and just by fiat change the agricultural site to what's become a large industrial site. This is own agriculture, it's own agriculture for a reason, and the laws and regulations of the town protect that agricultural use. You know, we're a town with, you know, laws and regulations, and property rights are not unlimited. You know, I can't go and do anything on my piece of property. For example, I like coffee. I can't roast coffee in my garage and then just sell to the public and vent all the smoke to my neighbors, that would be a nuisance. I can't do that. But, you know, the applicant wants to experience his property and create a further nuisance to the neighbors. So in essence, I think that, you know, 50% of the site is already not agricultural use, and, you know, any more, I think, would be violating the spirit of the laws that we all have to live by. Thank you.
Thank you. Is there something new?
Yes.
Okay.
Randy Repose again. This time I want to respond to William Monahan's statement of July 28th of this year. She wrote a letter to the board. Among the other pieces of advice she'd given the board, like she did tonight, make sure you rule the law and all this sort of thing. Well, she mentions that a sawmill is permissible at a nursery. But she doesn't want to say what kind of sawmill, a temporary sawmill that produces lumber, not wood chips, not wood for fireplaces, none of that, producing lumber. And I presume, again, that it's from trees that are on this property, temporary use. So she's asking you to pay attention to the law, but she described the law rather concisely. That's an example of that. The other thing is this, finally, after all of this, there's a section of the law that says, in 238m, I believe, are these proposed changes going to be more detrimental to the community than what exists now? And that's a question you have to decide. Thank you.
Thank you. Has everybody said what you wanted to say?
Just very briefly, I mentioned this originally, the number of vehicles and the materials that have been talked about tonight and are reiterated here, we have to include everything on the list. That doesn't mean that all of that is going to be on the site. It's no different than a rear portion of the site. If you're going to attach vehicle and material lists to a permit, you have to include every vehicle or material that could possibly be stored there. But as stated previously, equipment is being used off-site, stored off-site. So I just wanted to reiterate that, because I don't want you to leave with the picture that this is, you know, how this property, for the most part, is going to be used, because those vehicle and material lists are all encompassing, they have to be. those vehicle and material lists are all encompassing, they have to. Also, the statement that the use proposed is not more detrimental than what's existing, that only applies to a modification case. This is a new special permit. Thank you.
Everybody okay here? Then at this point, I'm going to close the hearing, and I need a motion to take it under advisement.
I'm so moved.
Does it second?
Second.
Luke, does second have to take it under advisement? All in favor?
Aye.
Go for it, stay. And we'll probably see this again for discussion. Brian, any thoughts at this point?
I'll have to get back to you on that.
Okay. Thank you. Okay. Next on our agenda, discussion slash decision, applicant Nathan Ellis Highway LLC, special permit modification to update
Close of anniability.
To update the equipment list, expand hours of operation, and allow outside parking of vehicles accessory to the primary use of the contractor's yard located at 210 Nathan Ellis Highway East Falmouth, J. B. Lambert's Collie. Okay. Close the hearing. So this is decision time, or both decision discussion. We do have a draft motion in front of us, and as is our usual way of doing things, I would like to have somebody read this draft motion, and then we can open for our discussion of it.
May I ask a pseudo-question, Mr.?
You can.
I would ask whether the board would consider a motion by the applicant to reopen the hearing.
I can ask the board, but we've already reopened it once. So my guess is no. What's your feeling about reopening it again?
No, no reason.
What would be the reasoning?
Yeah, I don't know why.
Let us have the discussion. The board had the last hearing. Our applicant just would like to address some questions that were brought up and clarify some of the points that the applicant made in the past.
What do you think?
I'm never opposed to listening.
No. I personally say no. We're done. I'm ready for the decision.
You know, you're
Yes.
Open it, Jeff, Jim.
I think we've heard everything.
We need to hear.
We heard everything. Paul?
Unless there's something new coming out, I don't see a reason.
Ralph?
No.
And I'm in that, so. No.
Okay.
So we have a draft motion in front of us, and I, as we usually do, I'd like somebody to read it, and we'll get a second, and then we can start discussion on it. Who wants to read it?
You.
Go ahead, Paul.
The entire thing?
The entire thing.
If you get tired, I'll jump in.
August 22nd, 2014, draft motion. Let the planning board vote to approve the application of Nathan Ellis Highway LLC to modify an existing special permit for a contractor's yard under Section 240-38K of the zoning bylaw for the property located at 210 Nathan Ellis Highway, assessors map six, section three, parcel eight, lot 10 and 11, according to a plan entitled, quote, "Site Plan for Accessory Use Prepared for Nathan Ellis Highway Limited Partnership," unquote, prepared by J.E. Collie PE dated 5/5/14, scale 1 to 40 pursuant to the findings and conditions below. Findings. Permit history. The decision granted a special permit for a contractor's yard under Section 240-38K of the zoning bylaw first issued for this property on February 18th, 1998. This special permit conditioned the number of vehicles at 14, hours of operation from 6:00 a.m. to 8:00 p.m., allowed fabrication of subassemblies such as pipe fittings and hydrant assembly, and permitted accessory activities such as screening materials and emergency repairs as necessary to remove vehicles or equipment from the site. Among other things, the planning board conditioned the decision prohibiting public retail activities. Decision was first modified on December 1st, 1999. The board allowed snow plowing activities to proceed without a limit on the hours of operation and modified the vehicle material storage list, allowing certain excavation and landscaping vehicles and equipment. Condition number five of 1999 decision required, quote, "All operations shall be for the applicant only. Additional tenants shall be approved only by the planning board as a modification of this decision," unquote. The 23,660 square foot parking area for rental vehicles was deleted from the plan. The board allowed accessory activities to include welding and light mechanical work. This condition number five is still in effect as of this date. On April 25th, 2000, the decision was again modified pursuant to condition number five of 1999's decision, which approved the tenant Cape Cod Fabrications, together with an equipment list, materials to be stored, and the accessory activities of this tenant. All other conditions of the previous decision remain in full force and effect. Eventually, Cape Cod Fabrication vacated the site. Finally, on October 15th, 2002, the decision was again modified imposing 11 conditions that, among other things, allowed asphalt and brick concrete processing subject to obtaining other permits, limited stump grinding, storage of up to 12 empty dumpsters, parking within setback areas subject to preserving certain undisturbed areas, and place the requirement that the applicant provide the board with a surveyed plan. Other than the Board of Appeals issuing a special permit for the construction and operation of a cell tower, the board is unaware of any other zoning permits that have been issued for this site. Current petition. The application seeks to amend the board's decision and modify the special permit by allowing two tenants, Cavosa Excavation, Inc. and Cavosa Disposal Inc., together with hours of operation, vehicles, equipment, supplies to be stored, and accessory activities to be allowed for each entity. The planning board held three public hearings on the application, where written and verbal testimony was received regarding the merits of the application. At these hearings, the board received testimony on current operations and evidenced that site has been used beyond the scope of permits issued by the planning board. However, the planning board does not have the enforcement authority over its decisions. This is a role of the building commissioner, Board of Appeals, and the courts. The board makes no findings, regards the past use of the site, and will focus on the current petition and will address the applicant's request for each tenant accordingly. Eligibility. At its sole discretion, the planning board may issue a special permit under 240-38K of the zoning bylaw for a called contractor's yard, unquote, as defined, in an agricultural zoning district under the standards and requirements found therein. Section 240-13 of the zoning bylaw defines a contractor's yard as, quote, "premises used by a building or construction contractor or subcontractor principally for storage of equipment and supplies, fabrication of subassemblies, and parking wheeled equipment," unquote. The board finds Cavosa Excavation, Inc. comports with this definition. This entity typically acts as a construction subcontractor installing Title V septic systems and providing foundation excavation services to building trades, together with construction, demolition, debris removal. Cavosa Excavation, Inc. provides subassemblies for water services and hydrant installation, together with landscape tools and supplies such as hydroseeding and hay bales used for soil stabilization during and post-construction. Cavosa Disposal, Inc. provides residential and commercial rubbish disposal and recycling services. Clients include West Elm, Falmouth condominiums at Old Dock Road, Falmouth Hospital, Equinamis Sidin, and other restaurants elsewhere on Cape Cod. In stark contrast to Cavosa Excavation, Inc., Cavosa Disposal, Inc. is not a building or construction contractor or subcontractor as required by the zoning bylaw. To accept any other interpretation invites any number of service contractors unrelated to the building or construction trades to apply to the board for a special permit to locate in an agricultural zone. Although the services of Cavosa Disposal, Inc. are worthy, the board cannot overlook the plain language of the bylaw and finds this tenant is not eligible to apply for this special permit. Competent jurisdiction. The planning board has sole jurisdiction to, excuse me, to issue a special permit for a contractor's yard in an agricultural zoning district.
None of that. How do you say that? Dr.? None of that.
Decisions of other boards acting in their areas of competency are not germane to the findings that the planning board makes under Section 240-38K. Decision of the Board of Health under Article 111, Section 31A, General Laws, regards the timing of operation of Cavosa Disposal, Inc. does not bind this board in any way when acting as a special permit granting authority under Chapter 40A, Section 9, General Laws. The board is free to impose conditions on the timing of operations of the contractor's yard no differently than it did 15 years ago when the first decision was issued. As a special permit granting authority, the board has the ability to permit accessory activities, emphasis is added, not accessory uses, as part of its decision. The zoning bylaw, not this special permit, specifies accessory uses allowed in an agricultural district. These accessory uses are designated pursuant to a vote of town meeting, a legislative cure that the applicant may wish to pursue. The board is without authority to find Cavosa Disposal, Inc. accessory to anything, including a contractor's yard that may be permitted by this board. Paragraph 240-38K, items 1 to 5. The planning board finds that the criteria found in Sections 240, 38K, 1 to 5, have been satisfied in that the site has the minimum five acres required in an agricultural double-A zoning district. Setbacks as modified by the board in its earlier decisions meet 75 and 30-foot minimum. The site is not located in a water resource protection district. The board received only one written complaint at its public hearing regarding noise allegedly from the contractor's yard. The source of the noise was never verified. Based on the weight of this evidence and as conditioned below, the operation of the contractor's yard will not have an adverse effect on a neighborhood predominantly residential in character. The construction width and grades of Nathan Ellis Highway are sufficient for safe travel to and from the site by the vehicles to be stored. Paragraph 240, 216, A2H. The board finds the special permit criteria found in Sections 240, 216, A2H have been satisfied. Conditions. The special permit shall be utilized as approved. Any changes shall be reviewed by the planning board to determine if a modification of this decision is necessary. Pursuant to Section 240-183B of the zoning bylaw, no occupancy permit for full or partial occupancy shall be issued until the planning board is satisfied that the conditions of this approval have been met. Except where modified by this decision, the conditions of the board's previous decisions for a special permit for this location remain in full force and effect. The planning board restates here conditions 1 to 11 of the October 15th, 2002 decision attached heretofore as attachment 1. Within 90 days of the date of this decision, the applicant shall provide the necessary documentation to the building commissioner to verify compliance with these 11 conditions. The specific hours of operations, type and number or amount of vehicles, equipment and supplies to be stored, fabrication of subassemblies allowed, and the accessory activities to be performed on-site shall be in accordance with this decision and attached heretofore as Exhibit A. The special permit is valid for a period of two years from the date of this decision, after which the applicant will need to apply to the planning board to modify this condition. The hoop building may not be utilized absent the building permit that the building commissioner may issue. The building will be placed outside the fall zone of the cell tower as depicted on the plan approved by the Board of Appeals. Exhibit A is a tenant is Cavosa Excavation. The hours of operation, normal business, 6:00 a.m. to 10:00 p.m., snow plowing is underway. Emergency assistance to public safety officials are, excuse me, unlimited. Equipment, vehicles, and storage facilities, I don't know if we have to read through all of this.
I would say no.
It's as indicated previously. Supplies to be stored on-site, within the storage trailers and new building spare tires, mechanics' tools, welders, steel, motor, and hydraulic oils, rolled water lines, flexible piping, PVC pipes and fittings, drainage pipes and fittings, water hydrant assemblies, landscape tools and supplies such as hydroseed and hydro, and slip defenses. Up to 10,000 cubic yards of low and small quantities, less than 100 cubic yards each of gravel, stone, wood chips, seashells, mulch, and saline and landscape materials, byproducts of site excavation work included, but not limited to asphalt, stone, and concrete to be recycled. Proposed fabrication of subassemblies, attaching fittings to pipes, assembly of hydrants, welding and light carpentry. Proposed accessory activities, screening materials, ordinary maintenance and minor repairs only as necessary to maintain vehicles or equipment, including welding and light mechanical work. Recycling of byproducts of site excavation work included but not limited to asphalt, stone, and concrete.
You have a second?
A second.
Okay. Then we will proceed now to discussion. Yes, Jeff?
I have a question about the previous permits. As I recall, I thought a certain number of dumpsters were approved for this site, like, a number like 14. And now if I'm reading this, it says we shouldn't even have done that.
No, it's 12 that were.
12, well, but if those 12 were for hauling, I mean, are we differentiating here between debris and trash and saying it's okay? I find that pretty, I find that a stretch to do that.
But that's what the original was for, was for construction debris?
Well, maybe the original was wrong then, because that's really what I was basing my thought process, why they could have some more, because they already had it there. But it sounds like maybe we shouldn't have done that to begin with, and that's why I'm getting confused by taking this, that use away.
Anybody want to comment on that?
Give that a try.
Yes, Doug.
So the original intent, I believe, was that the roll-off dumpsters would be used in conjunction with the demolition process, which is a common practice as an excavation contractor. You often have demolition of a structure in order to do excavation. So it's, sometimes they use a dump truck, but it's a practical way to do it is use dumpsters. That's different from a commercial trash hauling business.
And that was what it was permitted for? Yes?
Well, I understand the logic, I just didn't quite see the fine line being drawn, but that's just my opinion.
Okay. Other comments?
I can't talk.
I'll adjourn us after that, Maritana. Does anybody wish to make any other further comments on this decision?
I have one other question. I think at the last meeting I requested if one, if there was a house within the 300 feet, and I don't think that's ever been provided to us yet.
I did ask, and it's completely within.
So they're, they're good on that issue?
They're good on that.
That's, okay.
Yeah, I asked Marlene, and she said they're good on that. Okay. Is there anything else that should be answered with a yes call?
The only comment I have is the draft decision refers to coming back within two years. If I remember correctly, at the last meeting we had, we talked about coming back within one year. I'm not objecting to two years, but I thought the comment was made one year last time. I'd like to hear if there's any objection to two years versus one year.
I don't have any great objection. Does anybody else have any great objection to two versus the one that we had talked about?
No.
I think it's better to give them two to try to do business than to come back every year. It's a lot of work, money and expense.
It is.
And I don't, unless there's a, I guess, you know, a notice or, you know, a violation or something, that's why we have to have it every year. It's a lot of work for them and us.
Doug?
I think the reason for the year was because we, I think, were close to coming to consensus that we all could agree that to accept the disposal activities, and we were considering longer hours than what's in here. So I think that was the reasoning for the one year. But now that we have guidance from the planning department that there's no real standing for this, I don't see any reason to come back in a year. for this, I don't see any reason to come back in a year.
I agree.
Any other questions or comments? Okay. Seeing none, then all in favor of this decision?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Abstained?
Excuse me, sir.
Let him go. You succeeded in kicking me out of town. That's what you did.
You've already accused us of making mistakes. I think that's- Paul, let it go, Jim.
You don't even know the zoning law. You sat there last week, and you didn't even know the law. And he didn't open his mouth in correction. Thank you.
There's no point in engaging.
Well, I think it's unfortunate that people are abusing the volunteers in this town who work very hard to try to do the right thing for the town. And I've heard tonight that we've made mistakes. Maybe we have, but we don't need the abuse. And I find that very offensive. In fact, I think Ralph had a comment, a letter to the editor not too long ago, emphasizing that. I totally agree with him. I think that's most unfortunate.
Well, we have our zoning bylaws to uphold, and if we don't uphold them, they become suggestions only, so.
And also, it was part of our discussion, it was kind of a gray area that when I, like most of us, when we went back through all the documentation and the bylaw itself, you kind of saw it come a little bit more clear. And I think the decision that we made tonight was the right decision, based on our bylaws.
We're self-justifying now, but I think we're at least, yes, Ralph?
Well, I'd just like to remind the board that, that part of this decision offered a suggestion to the applicant that there was another way to approach it.
Absolutely correct.
And this was not a, something that shut that up.
Absolutely correct. Okay, so we move on to general correspondence. And we have one thing in here, hearing notice Cape Cod Commission, draft Section 208, Area-Wide Water Quality Management Plan, September 10th and 23rd, and October 7th and 21st. So, if you're interested in this, I would recommend that you, yes, of course, that the original 208 goes back, what was it, Brian, maybe twenty years, something like that?
Thirty.
Thirty, is it? Okay. So, this is an update on the Cape Cod 208 plan. And needed to be done, and it's getting done. They're looking for public comment now, I think, correct?
This town has a comprehensive way for a management plan, so you're sort of ahead.
Could you go, my head was still in the last meeting, I didn't catch the beginning of that, which is-
Okay, it's Cape Cod Commission, draft Section 208, Area-Wide Water Quality Management Plan.
Dates?
Those are September 10th and 23, and October 7th and 21. Okay?
The one closest to us.
There's a series of public hearings.
It's in Barnstable.
Well, there's one in Mashpee, too.
They're, they're different places, Wellfleet, Chatham, Barnstable, and Mashpee. And those are the different dates. So, they're, they're in the planning office, and if anyone's interested in that, I'd go in and take a look at the dates. They start at four, they go to 6:00 p.m.
At least we've done it, and we just need to hit the Mashpee, is that the intention?
We hit the one.
Okay, that's what I need to hear.
So, let me put it back in here so it doesn't get lost, and then you can pass it on down and look at it. The Provo folder will stand out. And that was it as far as general correspondence. Our next meeting is September 2nd.
September 2nd, we'll continue the hearing on CBS. If there are no further comments or questions, perhaps I'll add to the agenda to discuss this decision.
Okay, great. Thank you. So, I need a quick.
I just want, Brian, do you have any other feelings about the rest of the month of September for meetings?
We're looking at the 16th, Ralph, and we're looking at a joint meeting on the 23rd.
So, it's 2nd, 16th, and 23rd.
Correct. The ninth is the primary election.
Right.
Okay. So, meeting to adjourn, please? I'm motion to adjourn.
I'll vote to adjourn.
Second.
All taken.
Aye.